Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. We have a packed house. We have students that want to perform and we have a lot of people that want to speak. So I want to welcome you all to the April 18th Mount Vernon City School District School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Nginga.
Here.
Trustee Addisobi.
Present.
Trustee Gail.
Here.
Trustee Lenzi.
Here.
Trustee Kerwin.
Here.
Trustee Redd. Vice President White.
Present.
President Saunders.
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay, so we'll have communications from the public. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at the meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Speakers must register in advance by no later than 4:00 PM the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comment, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon education official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Thank you.
If you don't mind, please, we're not hearing you. So we expect to have a successful meeting. I suggest that y'all have to speak directly to your mic. So I'm standing here and I can validate you. Imagine even in the back there, nobody hear you. We're here to hear what you have to say.
Thank you, sir. We'll take that in mind. Can you hear me?
I'm valid.
You can't hear me?
That's better.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Our first speaker, Charlene Clark.
Good evening, everyone. I am Charlene Clark, building representative at Hamilton University for the Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers. Have you ever seen the look on a child's face when they feel unsafe? Have you seen their exuberance come to a screeching halt and turn into terror? On April 11th, students who were escorted to lunch abruptly returned on their own with a face full of tears and fear in their voices. As I sat in a classroom with these students, I had no answers for many questions they asked. I could not ease their fears as I had many questions as well. For the first time in my 20-plus years of teaching, I witnessed chaos brought on by safety and security instantly being stripped away from the students. All of this happened due to a stranger being able to enter our school campus with a pitbull. Nothing impeded their entrance to the playground and cafeteria, except for the demands of fearful lunch monitors to leave the premises. Their sense of security could have remained intact if appropriate security measures were in place at Hamilton Elementary School. Security measures that the staff has repeatedly requested to be put in place over several years. Years of being dismissed, overlooked, and/or ignored due to a lack of stability with building leadership has always, pardon me, has allowed this moment to easily happen. The only people who seem to carry the emotional baggage of this disaster are the students, staff, and parents, as they are the only thing, along with poor security, that is consistent at Hamilton Elementary School. Since April 11th, where are we now? We find ourselves being reactive and not proactive. Once again, we find our school district operating in damage control because they ignored the constant complaints of things that needed to be put in place or repaired. Once again, we are witnessing our students being the collateral damage for curtailing systems that should have been put in place. Here we are, eight days later, with the appearance of more work being done at Hamilton School than I have seen in the past four to five years. We cannot be a school district that proclaims, "For the sake of all children," when school security is not at the forefront of its plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Kyle Stewart.
Good. Good evening. I too would like to discuss the incident that happened on Tuesday, April 11th, at Hamilton Elementary. During this incident, the principal and the vice principal failed to put the school into lockdown, showing a complete disregard for established and practiced security protocols and thereby putting both staff and students directly into harm's way. Understand, people could have died that day. I ask you all to think for a moment how that would feel, having to call parents and loved ones of staff and explain to them how precisely and why they're dead. At the time, the following variables were unknown. Was the man armed with anything other than the pitbull? What was his intent? How long had he been on the property? Had he left a weapon, drugs, or an explosive on the property, or given them to a student? Had he already harmed, touched, or assaulted a staff member or student? Had he already kidnapped a child or faculty member? Subsequently, was attendance taken after this incident? Why did it take three hours to communicate to your staff that an incident occurred on the property? Any rational person would agree that a lockdown was necessary. This failure to follow the protocol and perform their duty to maintain a safe working environment for students and staff is gross negligence at best, and you now have a trust issue to deal with. As a husband to one union member and a friend to other union members in this school, I ask you, how can the Board, staff, students, or parents trust these individuals to fulfill their duty to keep everyone safe? Staff and students' lives were put directly in harm's way by their negligence. Therefore, should either the principal or the vice principal continue to be employed by Mount Vernon City School Districts, then "The health, safety, and welfare of our students and staff is our highest priority," I'm quoting Dr. Smith, "cannot be considered a true statement." There is no justification for the dichotomy of keeping these two individuals employed when they have failed to protect staff and students. We cannot trust them. As a consequence, I am demanding that the principal be removed from employment without severance or benefits effective immediately. I am also demanding that the vice principal be suspended and subsequently removed from employment. You have just cause in this scenario pursuant to New York Education Law Section 33,020, because both had the authority to call for a lockdown and neither did. This is negligence. Here and now, you have been granted, through sheer luck, a critical opportunity to show the community, staff, students, and parents that you do indeed care about their health and well-being. Surely, the Board would not willingly instill and thereby promote a lack of trust by subjecting Hamilton Elementary staff and students, let alone the district, to further risk by keeping these conscientiously negligent administrators employed. Correct?
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Ward.
Good evening. My name is Quishet Kouchi-Ward. I'm also known as Ms. Ward amongst my colleagues and students. I am also a MVTF union member, but a parent at Hamilton School. As a parent who has already lost a child due to the negligence of public safety, not in this town, but very close by, I will admit that, I am not in agreeance with how things were handled last week at Hamilton on 4/11. Although we are fortunate enough to all be alive, there are procedures and protocols put into place to safeguard our lives, to statistically sustain and preserve life. And instead, there were a lot of judgment calls being made personally to resolve the problem. And the fact that I let students out of my classroom to use the bathroom, so close to this incident, it really bothers me, because what if something had happened to them? I would have had that on my conscience, on top of what I am already dealing with. There are not enough safety resources at Hamilton School, and I am being told throughout the years of this year, this school year, that this is something that has been constantly requested. And getting an email as a parent and a faculty member that there is something that is to be installed on the gate to prevent further trespassers doesn't really put my mind at ease, but it asks me, "Why did it take this incident for something like this to be implemented?" It makes me feel scared. My anxiety has doubled, and there is definitely a deprivation of trust. So all I want to conclude is, yes, thankfully, no one was hurt, but do you want to wait until someone is? Because that's what two towns over did to my son. They waited until that little boy was gone. And I promise you, I didn't get a sorry. I didn't get a sorry. Are you going to tell us you're sorry, or our loved ones, as Mrs. Stewart had brought Please, just, there needs to be more.
Thank you. Lenzi Fertig.
Good evening. I'm a mother of four at Hamilton Elementary School. I'm also executive PTA member at Hamilton Elementary School, and I'm speaking on behalf of all the teachers and the parents. First of all, this shouldn't have happened to begin with. I know there's only two security guards in that school. If one is out, one of them is taking the whole school. But it takes this to implement only one guard, one extra guard in that school? Here's the big problem. I know in other school districts, when something like this happens, the superintendent and the Board are right on top of it to send out a notification that something is happening and it's getting taken care of and your students are safe. Okay? And the call continues throughout the day until the incident is clear. That's what should have been done, to prevent the chaos and parents finding out through News 12 or their child. It's not the principal's fault. It's not the vice principal's fault either, because they're going on what you guys tell them to do. That's the problem. Okay? That's the problem. You waited too long for a 5 o'clock phone call to go out about what happened at the school, when all I had to do was ask my son what happened. He told me, and I went across the street and spoke to News 12, and they told me what happened. That's not how it should have happened, at all. At all. And then last night, when I signed up to speak here today, an automatic email comes out from you guys, the Board, of what you're implementing? It should not have taken this long for that to happen. In other words, you're trying to pacify us to be quiet because this is what now you're implementing. This should have been done a long time ago. A long time ago. Okay? These deadlines you have in place for more security guards, for more this and for more that for Hamilton, I'm gonna hold you to it. I'm gonna hold you to it, because I'm the ones that asked News 12 to be here today. Okay? To see what you guys planned on doing for what happened last week. And I mark my words. If none of this changes, they will be back with me, along with the teachers that have my back, that are in the back of this room. Because it's not fair. Okay? It's not, it's not fair at all. It's not fair at all that my kids, two of my kids are here. These are my two youngest. She was outside playing when this happened. What if something happened to her? You're gonna wait till 4 o'clock to tell me something happened to my kid and she's not in school? Okay? My seventh grader, my son, shouldn't have to be telling me, "Mommy, this is what happened at school today. A man came into the school with a dog." He shouldn't have to be the one telling me. It's you guys. Take that into perspective as a parent, because I'm sure all of you are.
Thalia Langley.
Good evening. My name is Thalia Langley. I'm a teacher at Hamilton, as well as the KDA 8 Vice President. On Tuesday, April 11th, I had to witness the absolute terror that the lapses in security had on the students at Hamilton Elementary. As I sat in my classroom, about five kids came running in saying that they were in danger because a man with a pitbull was in the school. I instructed them to lock the door, and I headed downstairs to find the rest of my students. In the cafeteria, I encountered more hysterical children, running up to me and on the phone with their parents. I had no idea what was going on, but their fear was my fear. I instructed them to go to my classroom and lock the door as well. Two other teachers stayed with them as I investigated. While I witnessed the man being arrested, the terror on the kids' faces and their cries stayed with me. Swarms of parents began arriving to the school to rescue their children. All were upset, because there were no answers, only what they'd heard from either their screaming child, from another parent, or from social media. As I helped deliver children to their waiting parents, some of them ran out of the building, sobbing and embracing the parents they thought they would never see again. A third grader told his classmate, "I'm going home because there's a kid killer in the building." The most horrific sight of all was when I finally made it back to my classroom after 3:30. What I saw was the evidence of 11-year-olds who had prepared themselves to fight for their lives. They had pulled out every single, every scissor that I had in my classroom. They had gathered air freshener cans, bottles, textbooks, anything that they could use as a weapon. They had stuffed their book bags with books to be placed on their chests as bulletproof vests. No child should have to come to school and prepare to be on the front line of battle. Now, while the situation was being handled outside, there was panic and terror flooding the children and the staff inside due to the lack of communication. The news reports kept saying, "There was a man, but he didn't have a weapon." Well, he did. His presence, his voice, his dog was the weapon that was used to take away the little sense of safety and security that the children and the staff at Hamilton had. Now, I want to formally share in this arena that the students and the staff at Hamilton don't feel safe. With all the shootings going on and the deaths in Mount Vernon City School District, in the community, Mount Vernon City School District should have prepared for such an incident. At Hamilton, the teachers have consistently expressed their dissatisfaction over the lapses in security. We need doors that locks, monitored cameras, additional guards to compensate for lunch rotation and perimeter checks. We need better ways to communicate with the staff and the parents during emergencies. Now, we've been promised all of these things, but reactively. But as one of the KDA 8 Vice Presidents, I need to know that these safety measures will be in place for all of the schools. No other children or staff member should have to experience what we experienced on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Mount Vernon City School District must proactively create a safe, learning environment for us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langley. Marcia Brown.
Hello. On April 11th, I received a phone call that no parent should have to receive. My child called me, and I was too far to reach her in the moments that I needed to reach her. The terror in her voice as she yelled, "There's a man here." We live in a climate where we've witnessed on television shootings, and I'm blessed to have my child come home. Not every parent had that blessing. I am appalled that my child had to tell me that she should not have to choose between her safety and her education. And she should not. She has not returned to school. And I had to witness the screaming and the sobbing and her preparing me in case she doesn't come home. In case I don't come home, Mommy. I love you. That is not something a parent wants to hear. And I do not approve of Mount Vernon School District being reactive. We should not be reactive. We should be proactive. This situation has highlighted all the pitfalls of not only Hamilton School, but probably district-wide. The phone call that I received from the robot remote thing, I received more updates for the mobile food pantry than I received about what was going on with the safety of my child. I have to go through 17 different layers of security verification to get my child out of Hamilton, to which I don't mind. But how is it that a stranger was allowed to just walk through what should have been a secure territory for our children? My child spends more hours with you than she does with me. So this is her second home, and for her not to feel secure is unimaginable to me. Unimaginable to me. It does not make sense. And then to the report that we received on the robot call was so watered down, so inaccurate, so, so downplayed. You will not downplay my child's terror. She has residue that you're going to put a counselor in place to remove when she did not have that issue before. It's not acceptable to not one parent in this room. I had so much trepidation. I don't want to place blame. What I want is there to be change. They said there was going to be a gate there. If the gate is what's keeping my child mentally sane, why is it taking so long to erect this gate? If that's all she's asking for is a gate? I don't understand. She doesn't know that the security cameras don't work. She doesn't know that the, um, there's no, no, she doesn't know about all those. What she needs now is a visible form of security, a gate that closes. Security officers that are present. I'm sure each and every one of you live in a house where there is a door with a lock that you close for your safety. Why is that little, basic form of protection not afforded for my child? She ran out to school and collapsed in my arms, and she has not returned. Not returned. And now I have to look at a child every day who doesn't know if she's ever coming back to school, because the proximity of the person who did this, I believe, is literally right next door. And a, and a, and a, what's that paper called? An order of protection does not stop that. It's never stopped anything that a person was intentionally trying to harm another person. So put the gate up, please. Put the security cameras. We need more resource officers. It's a little piece of security for an 11-year-old and for all these people in this room. I demand better.
Thank you. We appreciate you. We appreciate you. Thank you. Jasmine Vasquez.
Afternoon. Basically, what happened, this guy who came with his dog came to the playground and got upset and demanded us to sit down. So during this time, I was scared on what was going on, and I had thoughts like, "What's going on? And does he have a weapon? Am I going to die?" And a student serves crying. And when he came back again, the school didn't do anything. Like, there wasn't any security or police officers. And that's when people said, "Something's in his hand." A bunch of students were crying and calling their mom, and he left to go to the roof. And when he came back, the third time, we had to go to the hallway, where the man was literally outside of the hallway. He would manage to get inside of the school cafeteria. Everyone was afraid. There was tears everywhere. I think the school seriously needs to protect everyone. Anyone could have got hurt or even died.
Warren Mitchell. Warren Mitchell.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent. First, I want to salute every Hamilton employee that just stood up and spoke and cast the idea of retaliation from building leadership to the side, because you felt that what you had to say was more important than the rampant understanding for so many years that if you speak out about things that you don't like and that you don't see, you're going to be retaliated against and have no one on your side to back you up. So I want to salute them right now. Took a lot of courage to come up here. Young lady that just left here, I have babies your age. I don't even know if I would have been able to sit in my seat the whole time if she had to say what she had to say, what you had to say just now. So let's just talk about a couple of things. First of all, there's board trustees that are on safety and buildings and grounds. Let me ask, did the trustee go check the building the next day? Did they come by? Did they come through for an assessment? Did they talk to the children? Do the people in Hamilton or any of our other schools know who their board trustee is, until just recently? All right? And have they seen any of their trustees in their buildings? This is the type of thing that we should not have to wait until something like this happens. We're in a time when children are being targeted for heinous and wicked acts. We're seeing it all over the country and almost weekly now. For us to have a door open that a person could walk in with a dog that we know to be known for, a tag dog, that has the ability to shred a child to pieces, and nothing in place to stop that? Absolutely ridiculous. What about the mental health of the children? And what about the mental health of our teachers, our building leads, and our employees? Who's caring about them? Who's actually saying to themselves, "We have to get support in there for them"? Children are dying on our streets seemingly almost every week, every other week. Are we having support in our buildings for those children and those teachers? If I had a dog walk in my building that I know was a killer dog, I'm gonna be upset too. And I'm gonna say this. The tax situation that's been going on, zero tax increase and all of that, let's make it straight. There is no drive to just create tax increases. It's a drive to make zero tax increases work and be responsible and fiscally healthy. There's a difference between just saying, "Zero tax increase, no cuts," and then a bunch of cuts happen on the low, and all kinds of things go wrong, and we lose programs, and the kids are back on the street in an already anorexic program district. And when board trustees sit and hear people come up and talk like this, the blank looks and the quietness, it really just kind of comes across as a slap in the face and a middle finger to babies and adults alike. Come out to your buildings and get involved, get your hands dirty and roll your sleeves and... Did they talk to the children? Do the people in Hamilton or any of our other schools know who their board trustee is until just recently? All right? And have they seen any of their trustees in their buildings? This is the type of thing that we should not have to wait until something like this happens. We're in a time when children are being targeted for heinous and wicked acts. We're seeing it all over the country and almost weekly now. For us to have a door open that a person could walk in with a dog that we know to be known for, a attack dog, that has the ability to shred a child to pieces, and nothing in place to stop that? Absolutely ridiculous. What about the mental health of the children? And what about the mental health of our teachers, our building leads, and our employees? Who's caring about them? Who's actually saying to themselves, we have to get support in there for them? Children are dying on our streets seemingly almost every week, every other week. Are we having support in our buildings for those, uh, those children and those teachers? If I had a dog walk in my building that I know was a killer dog, I'm gonna be upset too. And I'm gonna say this. The tax situation that's been going on, zero tax increase and all of that, let's make it straight. There is no drive to just create tax increases. It's a drive to make zero tax increases work and be responsible and fiscally healthy. There's a difference between just saying zero tax increase, no cuts, and then a bunch of cuts happen on the low, and all kinds of things go wrong, and we lose programs, and the kids are back on the street in an already anorexic program district. And when board trustees sit and hear people come up and talk like this, the blank looks and the quietness, it really just kind of comes across as a slap in the face and a middle finger to babies and adults alike. Come out to your buildings and get involved, get your hands dirty, and roll your sleeves way up high. That's what this should be about.
Good evening, Board. I was part of the Budget Committee, and I commend the committee and Mr. Silver for coming up with a budget that I think is going to be very palatable for the community. But that's not what I'm here about. I'm here about talking about revenue for the district. We have approximately 650 kids from this district who are going to charter schools. Each one represents about $20,000 of money that we have to send to the charter schools. It's about $13 million that leave our budget every year, and it's increasing every year as more kids go to charter schools. Now, we spend about $35,000 a year per student in this district, yet we are losing kids to charter schools, which, you know, cost far less than we're spending in Mount Vernon. So that's, that's really doesn't make sense, because we could certainly offer more opportunities and more, uh, more talent to keep these kids in the district. And if they continue to leave the district, then we're continuing to lose money, and the district will eventually have to decide if it even wants to stay in place anymore. And we'll end up having a situation where the only people you have here in the district are people who have not made a commitment to charter schools. Because, one, they don't know about them, or they're not that concerned about it. So that's your, your issue that you have to deal with to try to get kids back from charter schools into the Mount Vernon School District. The other part is that we don't have, we have a lot of kids who are going, paying tuition in other districts. Now, that is a benefit to us in the sense that we are not spending money to educate those kids, but it's insult, it's an insult to the, the Mount Vernon School System that people would rather educate their kids elsewhere and pay additional money than educate them in Mount Vernon. So I think the Board has an obligation to understand what we can do to get kids back from the charter schools into the Mount Vernon School System. And to get those kids whose parents are paying tuition to get them motivated to come back into Mount Vernon. And that would help in both ways. It would help, first of all, it would make the school district more attractive to people. It would help in the assessments. If kids start coming back to Mount Vernon, you'll see houses start selling for more money, assessments will go up, which will mean there'll be more money into the district. Right now, assessments go down every year, about $1 million a year. That has to be made up by the rest of the community. So I'd really like you guys to start thinking about something more macro, and that is making Mount Vernon more attractive to get those kids back from the charter schools and to attract the kids who are spending money elsewhere to bring it back into the district. Thank you.
I want to apologize to, to the Hamilton family that's here, because what I'm about to say really pales in compared to what you, what you guys are going through. So I asked you, you know, your apology earlier, understanding for what I'm about to say. At one of the past public meetings, it was alleged that some of us who spoke here regarding the reassignment of the superintendent were, were attempting to intimidate you. Now, I realize it's silly season and rhetoric can often get out of hand, but let me be clear. In my remarks, I just stated the facts. One, that the investigation being conducted by the Northern District of New York, not the FBI, by the way, is a fact finding, a search for the facts. Number two, that the history of this body regarding fact finding involving a superintendent allowed that a superintendent to remain in place. Number three, that the relevant actions of this board created the impression of criminal wrongdoing on the superintendent's part. Number four, that the board's actions raised questions as to why those board members who voted for Justin Spire are allowed to continue to make relevant decisions. And number five, the board's actions regarding the reassignment created the need to spend much-needed district funds for security on an outside law firm to represent the board. So if, so if in fact this body, this body is intimidated by these facts, then I submit that the problem lies with you. There's no such thing as your facts or my facts. There's just the facts. And if you are intimidated by those facts, that should tell you something. As for the other issue, if you go to the taxpayer-funded school district website and navigate to our district, then to Board of Education, you will see a page with pictures of the current board of trustees. The four appointed trustees who are running for election, who were appointed on July 13th, August 16th, and October 4th of 2022 respectively, are also on that page. However, if you go to that taxpayer-funded school district website, navigate to our district, then to district news and videos, you will see a page dated April 14th, 2023, called Meet the Board of Trustees, which has explicit information on all trustees, including the four who are running for seats, on taxpayer-funded website. Now, let's be honest here. For public consumption, that makes perfect sense six or nine months ago, when they were appointed. But to do so two weeks after entering full campaign mode with the dissemination of campaign literature, et cetera, clearly makes this post more than just a coincidence. It is a clear misuse of taxpayer funds. While there's folks on different sides in this silly season, I have no doubt that we can all agree that this is highly concerning. So for those of us who express their deep concerns about the misuse of taxpayer monies in Mount Vernon, for those of us who feel the need to expose mismanagement, for those of us who are out here shaking that tree, something big and ripe just fell down.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Have a good day.
I get four minutes.
Is that four minutes?
Yes.
You have four minutes, so. I think you're done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Can you hear me now? Ray Copeland? Anisa Vincent?
Ray, you're supposed to be next to last.
Mr. Keller, we have a lot of people. Come on.
All right. My name's Thomas Keller. I've been on the Budget Committee for a good part of the last 10 years, and I want to say this year was very difficult. We lost a number of personnel from the district over the last couple of years. A treasurer, Sajid Jackaraya. We lost Amy Mosel that Superintendent Hamilton brought with him when he left to go to Greenberg or whatever. She left just at budget time last year. We lost Marlon this year. Those three people did a lot of work with the Budget Committee. We lost two other people, one trustee, Melissa Munoz Patterson, was an MBA, a law degree. She had the committee for about three years, also on the Audit Committee. We lost her. We lost Rick Powers, arguably the most important person on the Budget Committee short of Mr. Silva. He did extra work going over the other four districts in Westchester County, White Plains, New Rochelle, Mount Vernon, Yonkers, and pointing out that we have a little more overhead than they do. Example, New Rochelle, 10,000 students, nine, nine buildings. We have 7,000 students, 15 buildings. I'm not counting this building. We also lost a payroll person who went to Florida. This has put a tremendous strain on Mr. Silva, because he's got all these people, all these functions reporting into him with a lack of staff. Then, this year, the city says, we don't have 11.7 million to pay you. By the way, just for the record, it's a lousy law, but it's the state law. After two years, the city's supposed to make the school district whole. This 11.7 goes back to prior to us collecting our own taxes. I asked the controller several months ago, can you pay the district a million a month? Nope, can't do it. Everybody see the Journal News today, front page? City's in more trouble. I want to thank Gary Pretlow and Jamal Bailey, our two representatives, one Assembly and one Senate, for what I think, I've heard, they're coming up with $5 million that we have to pay back over 30 years, which, whatever we don't use this fiscal year ending June 30th, we'll be able to increase the fund balance for next year. The other thing here, too, is even though we collect our own taxes now, only the city can foreclose on properties. The school district can't. All they can do is contact the property owner, commercial or residential, and ask them to, to pay. Just a couple of weeks ago...
Mr. Keller, your time's up.
Yeah, but don't I have an extra minute? Three plus one?
Mr. Keller, Mr. Keller, that's enough time.
Okay. I believe the, the budget is...
Mr. Keller, Mr. Keller, your time's up.
I get four minutes, three plus one.
You have four minutes already?
Come on. Anyway...
Mr. Keller, Mr. Keller, I appreciate, I really appreciate you, but your time is up.
All right. A couple of weeks ago, we had an $8 million deficit in the budget for next year. 269 versus 261. Mr. Silva's done a tremendous job in cutting that deficit.
Mr. Keller, please, thank you. We have a full house tonight. We're trying to listen to everybody speak. Excuse me? Mr. Copeland, would you like to yield your time?
One of the two, one of two schools has to be closed in the future. I'm not going to say which ones. This goes back to Judith Johnson, seven, eight, or nine years ago.
Mr. Keller, thank you. I apologize, but your time is up.
You know, this is really disappointing.
How much more, how much longer do you have?
We have to, we have to, thank you.
Sum up. Sum up. I'll continue the next meeting, but I hope you pass the budget for a 0% tax increase. Kudos to Mr. Silva for all the work he's done.
Ray Copeland, our next speaker, Ray Copeland? Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Good evening. My name is Ray Copeland. I'd like to yield one minute of my time to this gentleman here to get a chance to finish. Please keep my time correct.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. I, I don't need a minute. I just was going to, I was just going to... I was just, I was just going to ask that, that you cease and desist from doing it, but honestly, I'll just say this. The idea of stifling people's feelings by trying to take time away, you are proving people right. Have a nice day.
Ray Copeland?
Clock's still running. I ain't said nothing. Well, there you go. Get it right. Thank you. Ray Copeland, 236 Befford Avenue here in Mount Vernon. For a very long time, I see them come and I see them go. Now, it is election time coming up, and people that know me, that know I've been in the trenches for many years, come asking me, Copeland, what about trustee so-and-so? Copeland, what about Mr. so-and-so? What about that trustee? I don't know. Only way you're going to find out is come to the school board meeting, and you might get some information, or you may not. And I said that to say this. Y'all sit up there, and you don't want to hear what the public has to say, and these are the people that voted for you to represent them. You need to start representing. And when we come out here, we're not coming out here just to be acting like childrens. Y'all treat us like we first graders. You don't want to hear what we have to say. If we're saying something that you don't like, automatically cut off. That's not right. You have to stop that. If you don't stop it, it's going to be a chaos. People come here for answers, and if you don't have the answers, say we'll get back to you. So the person come back to the next meeting, and you still don't tell them nothing. So why are we coming here? You have to stop it. I tried to make a arrangement for us to have a meeting before the meeting, but I didn't get a chance to set it up the way it should be. But somewhere along the way, we're going to have to strengthen the relationship between y'all and the community, because you're treating us like children, and we're not children. Sit down, Johnny. Your time is up. Can I go to the bathroom? No, you just went to the bathroom. We're not childrens. Stop it. I'm serious. And, and, and most of y'all up here, due to the fact that have not been in circulation, I don't know your name. I got your names in front of you, but I can't see it. When it comes time to vote, I don't know who I'm voting for, because I don't know your name. I have no way of telling what you, what you did. I have no way of telling how you voted. How am I going to vote and make, and tell them the decision who I want to go put back in that seat? Yep, that need to be stopped. If I get a big piece of paper, then put it in front of your name, and you see the person's name on TV, you say, that's Ms. so-and-so, that's Ms. Johnny, that's Ms. Mary. That's the only way you can properly be identified when it comes time to vote, based on what you did. So as the gentleman said, there are some of you that assigned to different schools, I believe, whatever problems at that particular school, that, that one particular trustee will be in charge of that school. I don't know who that person is. How do you find out? And to Mr. Silver, I was at the last meeting, and you did do a good job with your presentation, but I was stunned the fact that we had to watch it on that screen up there, the figures that you put up there. We're supposed to digest that once you put it up there. In the past, we've been able to have papers where we could follow him and be able to say, this is right, this is wrong. At the next presentation, please try to have information for the public, so we can follow you, and we can take the information home and be able to figure out your figures.
Mr. Copeland.
But just to put it up on the screen, ask us to digest it, is not fair. Thank you very much.
Mr. Copeland, I do believe, Mr. Copeland, Mr. Copeland. Mr. Silva has the papers for you tonight, okay?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Mr. Silva does have the papers for you to read.
It would have been, it would have been nice if we had had it, but is it too late if we find anything that should not be?
I don't see why not. Give Mr. Silva...
So, Mr. Silva, you can, I'll get the papers, and I'd like for the other people here to get the papers also, so you can read and see what figures, how he come up with his figures.
Okay. It should be, it should be...
Because what happened is, I'm originally from South Carolina...
Mr. Copeland, Mr. Copeland.
What happened was...
Mr. Copeland, we have, we have a full house. Please be, please be mindful.
Give me my last minute, please. Thank you so much. Now, what happened is...
Mr. Copeland.
Never trust nobody to count your eggs.
Can you turn his mic off?
Don't let nobody count your eggs. You count your own damn eggs. You understand? And summing up, and summing up, and summing up. Trust me, baby.
Mr. Copeland, thank you so much.
And summing up, never, this is, this is, this is the way it goes. No matter who you put up there, if you don't come to these school board meetings like you are now, forget it. You can't only come here when something's wrong.
All right. Mr. Copeland, all right, we're moving right along to the superintendent's report. Superintendent's report. Superintendent's report. Thank you, Mr. Copeland, for your time.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you goes to everyone that came out to speak this evening regarding the incident at Hamilton. Your voice will not go unheard. April 11, 2023 is a day that we cannot ignore. What our students and staff experienced that day was very unfortunate and scary. A situation like this can never happen again. We have put things in place to ensure that this doesn't happen. Safety plans at each school are being reviewed and implemented, and Mr. Fagan and Dr. Beverly Jones will speak to security shortly. I would like to express my deepest condolences to the family and friends of Tamaani Turner. He was well-loved by the turnout that he received today at his funeral. Let's have a moment of silence for Tamaani. Thank you. Thank you goes to Assemblyman Pretlow and Senator Bailey for providing financial support to the Mount Vernon City School District. Thank you also goes to everyone that contributed to make an Autism Awareness Day a very, very special day. A special thanks goes to Ms. Teresa Scott for her contributions to the event. This evening, my superintendent includes students, so I would like to ask Dr. Gabitan to introduce the students from some very exciting programs, from Denzel Washington School, Mount Vernon High School, School, and STEAM Academy. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So, the last time our students spoke, many of them mentioned some very special programs they are part of. And as a result, many in the community wanted to know more about this program. So tonight, we invited our students from our varied high school to present and tell you what they have learned and what they have gained from this program. So tonight, we're presented our students from Denzel Washington, Mount Vernon High School, and Mount Vernon STEAM Academy that will speak about the Judge Judy Hur Honor Program, the Great Potential Liberty Partnership Program, Smart Scholars, MBK, the Star Scholars, and Mount Vernon Hero. Please pay attention as our students speak about what they have gained from this program. Many of these programs, the teachers who work these programs are volunteers. They do not get paid, and the students benefit a great deal. So tonight, I invite our students from each one of these schools to come up and tell you a little bit more about what this program entail. First up will be the Denzel Washington School.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, families and staff. My name is Leslie Bastida. I am a 10th grader at Denzel Washington School of the Arts. I am representing with Celine Buchanan, the Liberty Partnership Program. First and foremost, the program has offered many opportunities and events that are most for the time unknown for. For example, younger students in our generation may not take advantage or may not have the advantage to be in these programs that conduct well establishments. Secondly, our high school counselor, Ms. Masajo, as well as our teacher, Cassie Leoni, have worked hard as well as bringing the program closer to the students of Denzel Washington. The program has incorporated mental health throughout high school as well as wearing off the wonders of our future education, which is also college readiness. Recently, we had a trip to Purchase University, Purchase College, April 12th. It incorporated us in that mindset that we're getting ready to go to college. We're in 10th grade, and it's moving very fast, and it's very hectic. And the Liberty Partnership is very, very intriguing because it doesn't establish just one thing. It goes, it varies. It just, it's very interesting, and it's very fun, and it cares for us, and it helps us know things, and it brings knowledge to our minds that we didn't know that we can have. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Celine Buchanan. I am a 10th grader at the Denzel Washington School of the Arts. I'm a dance major. I'm also a part of the Great Potential Program. It's a great program. This is my first year in the program, actually. And what we try to focus on, as well as we are in our arts school, we try to incorporate arts into, into Great Potential. We have an arts management class that we take Tuesdays. I don't take it, but Leslie takes it. It's basically where students from Purchase come down from, from the school, and they talk to our students about arts management, mental health. And it's a great program because most recently, we have to work, and as students, we always have to work on our mental health. So each check-in that we have with our guidance counselor, Ms. Masajo, and our assistant teacher, Cassie Leoni, we're always talking about mental health. How are our grades working? How is school? How are, what are we getting for homework? Is the homework a little too much? So on and so forth. So it's a great program. It works with college readiness. It works with time management. And overall, I've had so much fun. I've met so many new people. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mount Vernon has been part of the Great Potential Program for over 30 years. This program has existed. Not only do they provide academic after-school tutoring, they provide mental wellness, they provide college tour. The students go into a summer college tour every year. At the moment, I'm going to invite a student from Mount Vernon High School to come and speak about high school heroes.
Hi, hello, everyone. My name is Jelani McCullough, and I am a high school hero. My experience with this program was very positive. As a hero, I taught in three elementary schools. It was very fun teaching the students using the high school heroes activities. The students were very engaged. They were also very bright. We talked about the economy, entrepreneurship, and careers. I also learned from this experience. I was very nervous when I started this program. And after my first experience, I became more confident and embraced my speaking skills. I am now considering becoming a school counselor. I am so happy Ms. Trambetta recommended this program, and I'm proud to say that I am a high school hero. That's all, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. Hello, my name is Mariana Reese. I am currently a junior at Mount Vernon High School and a member of Smart Scholars. I am here today to share my experience as a high school hero. High School Heroes is a junior achievement program that promotes financial literacy and fosters community. High school students get trained in great appropriate lessons and then become the teacher for a day. Lunch trainings are mandatory. We prepare kits, study materials, and every group member each has to learn their roles. I have been a hero for two years now. I taught at Graham Elementary School, Nelson Mandela, Mount Vernon Leadership Academy, and Chappagin School. My time teaching for High School Heroes has helped me learn patience and gain confidence in my public speaking, public speaking skills. I enjoyed learning from, enjoyed learning about the students in our community, and I got to experience something new with each elementary school I visited. I also, I am also a part of the Knights of the Round Table. The program is brand-new, and Ms. Trambetta allowed the students to take the lead from the start. We were high school students talking to middle schoolers about what high school was like. We went to Chappagin, and the students seemed just as excited to meet us as I was to prepare them for their futures. We talked about CTE classes, programs offered by Mount Vernon High School, and all our sports teams, which many of the came scenes, many of the kids seemed very excited about. We mentioned after-school programs as well as school activities like school dances and events. Next year, as a senior, I'll have the pleasure of being a mentor to the middle school kids that decided to go to Mount Vernon High School, and I'm looking forward to witnessing their journey. These leadership communities, opportunities have shaped my high school experience in a way that has both shaped me as an individual and connected me to my community. I hope to see them continue to the future generations of Mount Vernon students. Thank you.
The next program we're going to highlight is going to be from Mount Vernon STEAM Academy. They will talk about the Hur Honor Program. I also invite the Hur Honor member from Mount Vernon High School to also come and share their journey part of Judge Judy's mentoring program.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Smith, and members of the community. My name is Jalea Kerr, and I'm a mentee in the Hur Honor Mentoring Program. This program was developed by Nicole Shindlin and Judith Shindlin, known to many as Judge Judy, as an innovative and pragmatic way to boost self-confidence in young women in the workplace and everyday life. In this program, I have been paired with a mentor who is in the field that I want to pursue, which is medicine. Her name is Charisma McCoy, and she provides me with resources and advice for my future career and life. We discuss how my life will be in college and in the future, and how I can get prepared for my major in biology. The Hur Honor Mentorship Program has benefited me in many ways by teaching me various life lessons and opening the doors for new opportunities that I will value for life. I learned to always be open to meeting new people because you never know the impact that you will have on them or the impact that they will have on you. I gained many connections through this program and met many great people along the way. It gave me another reason as to why I should go into the medical field because it showed me why the world needs more people in the medical field to impact our communities in the world. I would recommend this program to any young woman in their senior year of high school because it provides you with a good insight on how life will be after high school and helps you plan for adulthood and your future career. As my time at the program has come to an end, I know that I will still have a strong relationship with my mentor and will treasure the moments that I have had and will continue to make with her. I would like to thank Mount Vernon STEAM Academy for exposing me to this program, and I truly appreciate Dr. Gabitan and my school counselor, Ms. Velas Paine, for giving me the opportunity to participate in this program. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, Superintendent of Schools, distinguished members of the Board of Education, parents, and fellow community members. My name is Priscilla Zoe Nyakon, and I am a senior at Mount Vernon High School and a mentee in the Hur Honor Mentorship Program Class of 2023. As a member of only the second graduating class of International Baccalaureate Diploma Program candidates and a Hur Honor mentee, among many other activities, this for me has been a very exciting and busy senior year. Yet, I am so honored to share the IB principles I learned and practiced in school with my Hur Honor mentor so that she can help me perfect them in the workplace. I aspire to become a UI UX designer and a fashion designer as well, and it's important to be an excellent communicator, enquirer, risk taker, and a principal and balanced person. All of this while being a young woman in a male-dominated space where technology and media collide. Having a mentor like Carla Hall, who is a leader in her field of risk management, is truly encouraging and serves as an excellent role model. Moreover, my sister, who also graduated from Mount Vernon High School and the Hur Honor Program, has been a source of great inspiration and support. I am grateful to be a Hur Honor mentee, and I hope the program continues at Mount Vernon High School. As my sister passed the baton on to me, I hope to pass it on to other ambitious young women at Mount Vernon High School so that many others can have these, can have these excellent and exciting experiences as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amy Espinal, and I am a graduating junior at Mount Vernon High School, and I am a mentee in the Hur Honor Mentorship Program Class of 2023. Honestly, it was not easy to make this decision, but I honestly thought that I had it in me to do it. So, I was scared that I would miss on, I would miss out on all the things that seniors enjoy, like having a shortened schedule and all the fun and leaving out early and refer, like what adults refer as senioritis. But I really felt ready to do this big step, to take this big step. My school counselor believed in me, but I also knew that I would need all the help that could be given to me. When she referred me to the Hur Honor Program, I was both nervous and excited. I was so proud that I could do both. But it was hard at the same time because there was so much going on, and I couldn't just focus one, so I had to take time to do all in one. As of right now, I have a mentor that listens to me and is there for me for everything that I need. Who cares about my professional plans and my high school experiences? She talks as much as I do. I do talk a lot. Hur Honor has also allowed me to make great new friends with other mentees that I may not have ever spoken to before we shared this experience. I was even elevated to a relationship position when we took our field trip to Regeneron. I had to practice that because, sorry. I was responsible to coordinate travel with the mentees at Mount Vernon High School. We had a great time. I have learned so much that I am a little less nervous about going to college in the fall. I know that it will, I will have Ms. Siskelwell, my mentor, and Hur Honor sisters to support me along the way. I think that was the best part of the program. Thank you.
So, right now, I am also going to invite a student from the Star Scholars Program. Star Scholars actually started by, is a program that actually is very championed by a former board member that will pick students and help them to their later high school experience to get them ready to college. So I invite all our Star Scholars to come to share their experience with you.
Good evening. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Smith, and the Mount Vernon community. My name is Leonardo Valdivinos, and I am a senior at the Mount Vernon STEAM Academy as well as a member of the Mount Vernon Star Scholars Program. The Mount Vernon Star Scholars Program is dedicating to helping top students get into their dream colleges. Starting from the application process, you can see how eager the program is to learn more about you and help you achieve your dreams. After being selected as a scholar, I was immediately connected with my mentor, Marcus Johnson. He has been invaluable to me and was a vital part of my college application process. Unsure of where to start, he helped me research school and begin writing my college essay. He is a current lawyer, and being that I desire to go into law, he was able to grant me firsthand knowledge on potential law schools and what degree to pursue to better prepare me. He revised my final college essay, and I couldn't be more pleased with its outcome. The Star Scholars provided us with SAT help through a partnership with Bespoke Education. All four scholars took part in the program every Wednesday, and we were eager to log on every time to learn from our educator, Eden. She not only provided for us educationally, but emotionally too. She became a friend, checking in on us when we would miss the program and making sure we weren't overwhelmed. Norm Savoy, the founder of Mount Vernon Star Scholars, would always email us useful resources, such as scholarships and upcoming programs. His events that bring all current and prior scholars together are always fun, and you come out having gained new knowledge and inspiration. Mount Vernon Star Scholars also granted me the opportunity to explore actual college campuses that would have been difficult to see independently. A core memory is our trip to Cornell University and Ithaca College with Darcy Miller, co-founder and mentor of Mount Vernon Star Scholars. Darcy enthusiastically learned about our plans for the future and gave us very useful advice. Overall, the Mount Vernon Star Scholars Program provides you a network of people who are rooting for you every step of the college application process. I am grateful to say that thanks to the Mount Vernon Star Scholars Program coordinators, my mentor, Marcus Johnson, the Mount Vernon STEAM Academy staff, and my counselor, Mrs. Davis Bedeau, I've been admitted into many amazing colleges, including New York University and Cornell University.
I know it's a lot, but we have a couple, two more programs I want to highlight. I would like to invite our MBK fellow. One of our fellows is not here tonight because he's visiting his choice school, but I would like to invite Walt Quenos, our current MBK fellow, to come and share about the- but I would like to invite Walt Quenos, our current MBK Fellow, to come and share about the program.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education, President, and all board members and community members. My name is Walt Reynolds. I am a Mount Vernon senior knight, an IB student, an employee, a future CEO, and a friend. I immigrated from Jamaica in 2020 at 15 years old during the global pandemic. It was one of my life's greatest challenges, but I am strong and determined as I am resourceful. I am also supported by some amazing adults who saw something in me that all the chaos couldn't hide. My teachers, Mrs. Gonzalez, Miss Joseph, Miss Sherlock, who never take no for an answer. My school counselor, Miss Williams, who never let me give up on anything, and my mentor from the MBK Program, Mr. Campbell, who doesn't hear "I can't" or negative words. I am going to college in the fall to pursue a bachelor's degree in business management where the opportunities of finding the career of dreamt of are limitless because I am limitless. I endeavor to make my teachers, family, and most importantly, myself proud. As an MBK Fellow, I have learned that with great support and hard work, you can do anything whether in school, at home, or in the community. I have met some amazing people and recently had the chance to travel to Albany to represent the Mount Vernon High School and our great city alongside my new MBK brother, Rayanu Adams. My MBK has truly helped me to see what's possible. I am Walt Reynolds, and I am my brother's keeper.
Good evening, Board Trustees and Superintendent Dr. Smith and other members of the Mount Vernon community that might be here right now. My name is Kevon Palmer. I am an 11th grader from the class of 2024 at the Mount Vernon Steam Academy and a member of the Smart Scholars Program. I am excited to share my thoughts and aspirations with you today as I embark on this transformative journey with my brother's keeper. This program founded on the principle of uplifting and empowering young black males like me pairs us with dedicated mentors who guide us in realizing our full potential and help us overcome unique challenges we may face in our lives. As I join my brother's keeper, I hope to forge strong relationships with my mentors and peers, fostering an environment of mutual learning and support. This program, I believe, can be a game changer in my life, providing me with the tools and guidance I need to unlock my potential and strive towards excellence. Due to mentorship and educational opportunities offered by my brother's keeper, I look forward to personal growth and development, as well as the chance to give back to my community by inspiring and uplifting others who walk the same path. I stand here today filled with anticipation and gratitude, ready to embrace the life-changing and experiences that my brother's keeper has in store for me. I'd like to thank the Steam family for supporting me on my journey to find a better version of myself.
So, on May 19, Mount Vernon will be choosing two new fellows to represent the city, and we are currently doing interviews. We have 40 young men who has applied to be the next two my brothers. So I would like to invite the students who are part of this program. And next September, we'll have two cohort taking college classes, more than 250 students. So I would like to invite the students from all three high schools to come and share with you what it's like to be part of Smart Scholars.
Best for last. All right. Good evening. My name is Jazzy Christine Marsh, and I am a 10th grader part of Smart Scholars that goes to Mount Vernon High School. This program is truly amazing for it is welcoming and very supportive. Throughout my time there, throughout my time there, I have learned how to communicate with my colleagues, with teachers, and learned how to seize opportunities in all forms. This program is participating with Mercy College, so I may work hard and gain an associate's degree by the time I graduate, along with my diploma. We do have summer sessions throughout July, from early July to early August. And it is weird. I do enjoy going to school during summer because I get to stay with people that encourage me to work hard and to ensure that I have a bright future. I want to be a respiratory therapist, and each one of my teachers ensure me that I will work hard and stay on top. Smart Scholars, Smart Scholars is challenging, and not every person is going to be a straight A student, but it does ensure you that you can work hard and gain what you want in life. You have programs such as High School Heroes where you get to show your leadership to younger children. We do science projects. We have community time where we can express ourselves in a healthy way. We have an after-school program where you're able to get help for your homework, tests, study, cramming for a regents. It is a program that I implore every student that is going into high school or that is in high school as of right now to utilize. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Trustees and Honorable Superintendent Dr. Smith. My name is Francesca Tavares. I'm in the 11th grade, and I attend the Mount Vernon Steam Academy. I am also a part of the class of 2024 Smart Scholars Cohort, which is partnered with Mercy College. You might be asking, what is a Smart Scholar? As a Smart Scholar, I am a dedicated and persistent high school and college student. While there are many other programs that students can be a part of, the Smart Scholars Program is unique as it allows students to receive college credits while also getting a high school diploma. The Smart Scholars Program allows students to reduce student tuition costs because of the compressed time needed to complete a college degree. It also provides academic and guidance support that will address students' needs, such as emotional support, and will begin to prepare students such as myself for a fulfilling college experience. During my time as a Smart Scholar, I have created stronger relationships with my teachers and administrators as I work with them on a day-to-day basis. Smart Scholars offers academic enrichment to ensure we are successful in these courses. This year, I am taking AP Chemistry, AP US History, Pre-Calculus, AP English Language and Composition, as well as WIN, which is an acronym for What I Need. In WIN, we learn life skills such as interview and public speaking, how to handle life stressors such as peer pressure, conflict resolutions, and college preparation. The Smart Scholars Program has personally helped me achieve better grades and has made me want to strive for excellence as it pushes me to work harder. The Smart Scholars Program has made me strive to apply to different competitive scholarships such as the NSLYY Scholarship and All Paid For Study Abroad Scholarship created by the US Department of State, in which I became a finalist to go to Turkey for free in the summer of 2023. I know that the Smart Scholars Program will help me in my senior year when I apply to college scholarships and universities. I want to thank the Steam families such as Ms. Marte and Ms. Pogue for giving me this extraordinary opportunity to be a part of the Smart Scholars Program. I also want to thank Dr. Smith and the Board of Trustees for allowing me to be here today.
Good evening to the Board of Trustee and Superintendent Dr. Smith. My name is Tajia Dixon, and I am from Mount Vernon Steam Academy, not British Smart Scholars. My experience in the program has been positive. I've been provided with extra help in the after-school program that we have to attend daily. Some more positive experiences that I have seen and experienced in this program are that it keeps you and leads you in the right direction as a student with life skills. Smart Scholars gives us an extra boost knowing what the benefits are and what it can award us, such as college credits and help get into colleges of our choice. Colleges will see what we did during the course of our high school career, which would be this program, and that could give us extra thought and acceptance process. Smart Scholars means a lot to me because it is a big opportunity for me. This opportunity is important because this can help me in my future life when I go on to college and start getting jobs. It also means a lot to me because it leads me in the right direction throughout high school, which is very important to my high school life. It is important to my high school life because I have seen people get hurt all through my freshman year, so Smart Scholars helps me and restricts me from doing the bad things and making the wrong choices. Their program also helps me to not get myself caught up in the wrong situations. As middle school is transitioning to high school, the Smart Scholars Summer Program helped us have a smoother transition into high school with courses like Advisory, Avid, and introductory courses of what we're going to do in our core classes in high school. I also was able to make good friends and become closer with people during the summer program. During my stay in Smart Scholars, I look forward to continuing to attend the program for my full high school years. During those years, I look forward to improving my weaker skills academically and pursuing my goals that I have set for my future in the program and in high school. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Morrison.
And I'm Rojay Dentson.
We are currently enrolled in the Smart Scholars Program at Denzel Washington School of the Arts and have been members since our freshman year of high school.
Smart Scholars is essentially a program that prepares us for the challenges and opportunities we have to face in college as young adults. For example, we learned the importance of time management and daily responsibilities to have a successful learning experience.
Previously, we have taken AP World History and are currently taking AP English Language and AP US History and receiving college credit for those classes.
The best part about Smart Scholars is that we're receiving our college credits now. This is a good thing because our parents will not have to pay out-of-pocket for classes we already took in high school, and hopefully, we will carry a lot less debt when we graduate college.
We are also in the Smart Scholar After School Program. We are currently doing a novel study on a book called Monster by Walter Dean Myers. It is a story that is both chilling and engrossing about a 16-year-old black boy who attended a top school in NYC and is studying filmmaking. Suddenly, his life takes a terrible twist, and he is on trial for murder. It is written as a screenplay, and we all have distinct roles.
I'm super excited for the future as next year, we will be taking AP Calculus, AP Environmental Science, and AP Government to add to the credits we already received.
Smart Scholars is the best thing that happened to us, and we are fortunate to have been selected to be part of this program. Hard work really does pay off, and to have two years under your belt is once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We're truly grateful. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Honorable Superintendent Dr. Smith. My name is Natalie Torres Veliz. I am in 11th grade at the Mount Vernon Steam Academy. Two years ago, I've been offered the opportunity to be a part of the Great Potential Liberty Partnership Program. You may be asking yourself, what is this program about? This program has helped me grow as a student, exploring new things that I wouldn't be able to do on my own. Without this program, I wouldn't be able to be where I am right now. There are so many other programs out there, but there isn't one like this. The Liberty, the Great Potential Liberty Partnership Program focuses on college preparation, career exploration, leadership, and character development. Along with this, you will have opportunities to go, to go explore different colleges and have real-life college experience. Within this program, I was one out of two people that had the opportunity to attend an Empire Promise Summit for three days, in which I will participate in workshops, workshop challenges, college tours, and other team building, team building and network activities. This will help me learn more, learn more about college life. Also, within this program, I was able to attend a SUNY Purchase College where I learned about, where I learned how to manage myself and not to be stressed, to not just survive, but thrive. I am proud, I am honored, and I am thankful to be a part of this program. It has prepared me mentally. It has helped me gain more knowledge about college. It has helped me grow more as a person and to not be scared and to take opportunities that is right in front of you. As the school year slowly comes to an end, I'm looking forward to use this knowledge and experiences towards my last year of high school so I can get into a good college and to pursue my dreams. I would like to thank Dr. Gabotan and Ms. Veliz Payne for helping me every step of the way. Thank you and have a wonderful night.
That's it?
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Donna Jackson, and she will discuss Grow Bag Project.
Good evening, Board Trustees. Good evening, Dr. Smith. Good evening to the attendees in the audience. My name is Donna Jackson. I am a resident of Mount Vernon. I am the current deputy city clerk for the city of Mount Vernon, and I am also a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Zeta Nu Omega Chapter. Our chapter, where Dr. Karen Williams is the chapter president, has several important impact programs. We promote unity, we encourage college attendance, and we work to alleviate problems. Our goal is to be of service to all mankind. Over the next four years, we have a major initiative called Enhance Our Environment, and amongst many things, shredding, recycling, waste reduction, planting trees. One of the major projects that we're working on is gardens. So we are here tonight because there is an initiative on the agenda called the Grow Bag Project, and it is a major gardening and social justice and food justice project where, at no cost to the district, I was told to mention that many times, at no cost to the district. We are in partnership with some amazing partners, the Westchester Land Trust, Federated Conservationists of Westchester, the County of Westchester, and we will bring resources to the very underutilized greenhouse at Mount Vernon High School where students will engage and grow over 500 grow bags, five-gallon bags of vegetables. We hope to impact at least one school lunch before the year is out if the vegetables get to maturity at that level. And at some point, I'll go back. And we hope to impact school lunches when the vegetables get to maturity. Before the end of the school year, the students will have an opportunity to continue the growing cycle in their homes. They will be able to take these grow bags home, and we will also give them out to the community. So it's a way to impact food insecurity in the city of Mount Vernon, New York. We hope to be able to bring this to scale at some point. I saw the resolution in there, but it didn't have a copy of the presentation that we had put together. So if the trustees are interested, I have an actual copy of the presentation if you wanted to distribute those amongst the group. We are here to answer any questions that you may have. It's an exciting project. We hope to be able to impact just how students care for the land, how they engage. We want it to be a resilience point. We will involve art and journaling in this project. And if there are any questions, I'm absolutely happy to answer them. Thank you.
No questions? Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
So will the Alpha Kappa Sorority be there to help the students maintain the growth of these?
Absolutely. So all of us that are going to be directly engaged with the project, we understand that safety was a major concern, and that was, you know, the hot topic of tonight. All of the members of the initiative that will be engaging with the students have had their background checks done. They will be coming in from time to time to speak with the students. Most of the activities will take place on the weekends. There will be several, we call them workdays, there will be several workdays over the course of May where we will be putting compost that is being donated from the County of Westchester into the grow bags. We have a farmer from New Jersey who has 600 seedlings growing in her greenhouse that will be transported down here to Mount Vernon and transplanted into those grow bags. The students will care for them, and over the course of the weekends, we will, we will help with just making sure and maintaining the plants. On May 20, there will be a very large event where we will bring in different resources and different organizations that have a lot to do with caring for the planet, healthy soil, composting. The Black Farmers Fund is working with us. Their lead director, Olivia Watkins, just won a James Beard Award. So we're trying to have students engage with people that look like them and that are doing major things in the food justice space.
And this will be a yearly event?
This will be a yearly event. We have a four-year mandate to plant these gardens, and we are looking forward with expanding this relationship with Mount Vernon City School District over the next four years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Have you partnered with the CTE Program and the?
The?
Life Skills? Not just life skills, but the cooking. What do we call that?
Oh, that'd be great.
The cooking.
So we look for, we look forward to speaking more with the chef and the culinary program. We have Ms. Rochelle Fears that is working with our project and is integral to that, and her students, her life skills students, will be working with us as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, next we will have Dr. Beverly Jones and Ms.
Okay, next we will have Dr. Beverly Jones and Mr. Fagan and they will discuss safety.
Good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon, community. Good afternoon, schools, school administrators, teachers. Let me begin by extending my apologies to the Hamilton family and what took place last week. I am a part of a team that is making sure that this never happens in our school district again. I know it is easier said than done, but allow me to point out some of the things that I've put in place since yesterday. So, we have fixed all external doors at Hamilton School. And with the exception, and those doors will be locked, with the exception of one that's mandated by the fire department. And a school monitor will man that door every single day. We also installed, effective about four o'clock today, a security gate with a pushbar exit for the playground. This is keeping everyone, man and dog, out. But it, you know, it can be open from within. So in case of emergency, students will be able to push out if they have to run away from the building. But no one will be able to enter the playground as of 4:00 PM this afternoon. The two back doors, again, are among the doors that have been fixed. They will be locked and we will have security guards. In addition to locked doors, we will have security guards as well. There are two classrooms. There were two classrooms, let me say it that way because they've been fixed effective today. There were two classrooms where the intercom system does not work. Effective today, that's of the past. Those two classrooms, the PA system, their intercom system has been upgraded and are functional. When we didn't know if that was going to be possible by the end of today, we have distributed radios to those two classrooms to use in case there was an emergency before we were able to complete the, the system. The building administrators, we have stressed, will not take lunch during students' lunchtime. They will be available to man the building as necessary. We, effective this afternoon, we have added an additional two school monitors to the Hamilton count, making it four. During school monitors lunchtime, we are, we are assuring you that there will be a monitor at the front door, monitors on the playground, and monitors at the back door. So all external doors will be manned. The principal will be continuously informing all individuals in the building, students and staff in the building, as to these new updates. And in the, in the, not soon, in the near future, let me say that, a state-of-the-art security camera system will be installed at Hamilton. This is an ongoing project. And as of today, the updated reports on the camera system. Mount Vernon High School completely, completed with 158 cameras around the building, throughout the buildings. Parker School completed with 74 cameras. Williams School, 50% completed with an estimated completion day of the end of this month. Rebecca Turner is in progress. And there will be 73 security cameras at Rebecca Turner School. The other two schools that are, will follow in Phase One, Lincoln Elementary School and the anticipation that there will be 93 cameras. Tropigan anticipated 93 cameras. And these are six schools in Phase One, scheduled to be completed by the end of the school year. I want to talk also about the PA system. We have PA systems, some schools have completed and some are still in progress. We jumped on Hamilton School because we learned of the situation with those PA systems and those got completed today. Parker School completed. And the phone system is in progress to be completed for 21. Williams School completed. And the, and the telephone system in progress to be completed for 21. Or April 21st, not year 21, sorry. Rebecca Turner School, the PA system completed. And the phone system again will be completed April 28th. Lincoln School completed the PA system. The phone system will be updated April 28th. Tropigan completed. The PA system and the phone system will be fully functional by April 21st. Mount Vernon High School is in progress and the estimated date of completion is April 21st. So, Mr. Fagan, have I forgotten anything? Anywhere? So that's our brief report on safety and security in our buildings. Thank you.
Dr. Jones? Can we have a copy of all the security measures that you just said?
Yes.
For the Board of Trustees?
I'll make it available.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your report. The last report for the superintendent's report will come from Mr. Ken Silver and he will discuss the budget.
Thank you. Is it two?
Um, pardon me, Mr. Silver. Would you also be able to speak to the certificate of occupancy? Thank you.
That's good. Good evening, everyone. Can I be heard? Hello? Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The budget that you will be asked to approve tonight has been revised since the budget that you saw several weeks ago. I believe that Trustee Kirwin will be speaking to that subject when committee reports are given. But we have revised the budget and we are still under the current budget total for the current year in our next year's budget. We have been fortunate to get $5 million from, through Assemblyman Pretlow and Senator Bailey to help us get through this year and all of next year as it sits right now. But some of the changes that we have made in the budget since you've seen it last are for the most part to add things to the budget since we have been able to afford more but still stay under the current budget and still have no tax increase for next year. So some of those items, which Board, you received last Friday from the superintendent, are that we have added the position of Associate Superintendent for Business. We have added five school resource offices called SROs, which we did not have this year at all. We've added nine reading teachers. We've added four math specialists. We have provided additional funds for CTE after-school programs. We have added four attendance teachers. And we have increased the amount of money for after-school programs substantially, all within the framework of staying within the budget, being able to have our contractual obligations met. The budget will be about $96,000 less than the current year. And all revenues and expenses for the current year and next year match up. Everything is, is fine in our revenue and expenses. So you will be asked a little later, Trustee Kirwin is going to be speaking about the Budget Committee and the work of the Budget Committee. That included some of the people who spoke tonight, some of the people who didn't speak tonight, but we will hear more about that later. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them. You also did see this budget has been on board docs as well for your review. Okay. So the subject of the certificate of occupancies, occupancy has come up. We are still doing a fire watch at Lincoln School, but we are near completing, replacing the entire fire alarm system. Today, we had, we had to do a fire watch at Parker yesterday, perhaps for one more day if something happened with the alarm system, but that has now been fixed. Our certificate of occupancies are in place at this point. We are in compliance. We have a new inspection that we will have to be submitting in a short period of time. And I would say that we have made major progress through this past year in replacing virtually all of the emergency exit lights in the buildings. We have improved the electrical systems in all the buildings. We have made every building safer, whether it be by repairing playgrounds, repairing fire escapes. We've done a lot within the current budget and we still expect to spend less than the current budget by the end of this year. So we are pleased with, with where we are and we're looking forward to a brighter future.
How bright.
Thank you.
Very bright.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. Is that it for the superintendent's report?
That ends the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Questions and concerns on the superintendent? How long usually is a superintendent's report going to be? Your portion of this meeting. How long is it going to usually be?
Do I have a time limit?
Yes.
I think public comment took more time than usually.
Yeah. So we have time limits?
Public comment has time?
We have, we have time limits for the superintendent's part also.
She had a robust report tonight.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll go on to committee reports. I have someone in the audience that's been ready to do a committee report. So if you don't mind, can I just do mine first?
Oh, mine left.
Oh, yours. Oh, yours, yours left. Okay. So I'm going to ask Mr. Church to, to present for my committee report. Mr. Church and his wife, Mrs. Church.
As I said, my name is Marvin Church and this is my wife, Dr. Diana Williams. She's the boss and she's going to present.
Thank you.
Woman's work is never done. My name is Diana Williams and I am honored to present tonight to the honored trustees, the staff, parents, and guests of the Mount Vernon School Board. So Marvin and I are two ordinary citizens doing what we can to support our students in our community. And we are either the founders or the originators of those three organizations that you see on the slide. And I'm going to take each in turn. Next slide, please. The Environmental Leaders of Color is a not-for-profit we formed just three weeks before the pandemic. And it is an organization whose mission is to advocate and educate socially and economically vulnerable communities about climate change and related opportunities. One of our most successful program is our Students' Summer Energy and Environmental Program for Teens, where we teach students in Mount Vernon and from other cities in Westchester about climate change, climate change-related jobs, and what their growth can be in the solution for climate change. Last year, our second year, we graduated 100 teens from our summer program. Later this year, we're going to start an initiative in Mount Vernon for Mount Vernon students as an after-school incentive program to teach students about technology and the environment. Essentially, it's a computer program that will, that students will learn and then they will learn how to build robots. And we figure if we get them early enough and we give them a lot of time, by the time they're ready to graduate from high school and enter college, they could become proficient in computer sciences. Next slide, please. So this is our graduation from last year, ELOX graduation. You may recognize some of the faces because some of those students are Mount Vernon students. They are from YCOP and the Mount Vernon Youth Bureau. We had a wonderful six weeks. They had to present a science exhibit on graduation day. And then we took them to dinner, lunch rather, at X2 afterwards. And I will tell you that I was very impressed with the students. We had people come to the science fair at the Yonkers Riverfront Library. And one of the attendees was the president, no, sorry, the department chair from the Westchester County Community College, who was the head of the math and science department. And he challenged every student to understand, to see if they understood the scientific principle behind their experiments. And they all did. So I was very proud of them and we're planning to do something similar this year. Next slide, please. Another organization that, well, this is another organization, actual program that Marvin and I are involved with is Adopt Clean Energy. And this program is a program that started by New York State to make sure that New Yorkers move from fossil fuel for heating and cooling and move to cheaper and cleaner energy. This is a huge initiative. It's going to bring billions of dollars in the New York economy. Adopt Clean Energy is the Mount Vernon and New Rochelle Program. And we help without any cost to property owners in Mount Vernon. We help Mount Vernon residents and building owners identify, teach them about clean energy alternatives that's cheaper and cleaner. And we also help them identify the technical assistance they will need, contractors, and actually identify financing. One of the, part of this initiative is that we get money to train residents in Mount Vernon and New Rochelle to become heat pump contractors. And a student can leave Mount Vernon High School, get trained, and there's a potential to make as much as $100,000 a year. We know that not every student who leaves high school goes to college. And this would be a wonderful opportunity for graduates of Mount Vernon High School or even 12th graders to participate. And we would And we would like to welcome the school to work with us, see if we can do training for some of these students. Next slide, please. So this is what heat pumps look like, and they are the newest thing in energy. At some point in New York State, you will not be able to get oil and gas. That could happen in the next 20, 30 years. So this is something that everyone will have. There's going to be a need for people who can install these systems, maintain these systems, and for the younger generation, they absolutely need to learn about them. Next slide, please. So Commer Enterprises. This is a for-profit organization, and we are, we do pro bono work for the city of Mount Vernon by identifying opportunities where the city can have energy-related activities. We are spearheading new technologies for Mount Vernon, and we are partnering with an organization called Frontier Financials to develop the Mount Vernon Y and create a center of excellence for young people. And the partners in this project will be the Mount Vernon Youth Bureau and the Mount Vernon YCOP. And we're hoping that at that site, we're going to have opportunities for children, for job training, and other opportunities in Mount Vernon. Next slide, please. And that's what the project is going to look like. And at the bottom, on the right side of the screen, what you see is what energy is going to look like in the future. There is a lot of loops under the buildings, and buildings will be sharing energy. I'm not going to explain the science to you, but this is what the next 30 years is going to look like. Next slide, please. And how we would, we'd like to collaborate with Mount Vernon High School or Mount Vernon School District. Well, one of the things we already did is that we introduced the Microsoft TEALS program to the school board. And one of our board members is a vice president of Microsoft. He made that available to us, and we introduced the school board to this in a previous meeting. TEALS stands for Technology Education and Learning Skills or Service. I'm sorry, I forget what the last, the S stands for. But we want to help Mount Vernon High School participate in this program. We're also going to see if we get Microsoft to do some after-school programs and incentive programs with our younger students. Another thing is to bring in technical skills, people in the clean energy sector who can help our high school students in their senior year learn technical skills so they can actually have a decent job when they graduate, right? Yesterday, our board member from Microsoft made a presentation at the Dole Center, and he said that people without college education who can get a certificate in, was it AI, Artificial Intelligence, can make as much as a million dollars. And he is from Microsoft, so he would know. So we want to make sure that our children here in Mount Vernon have some of those opportunities. And another thing is that what we can do for Mount Vernon School District for free, no money, is to make sure that the school district, all your buildings are outfitted with clean energy alternatives. That will save you a lot of money, and there is funds out there to make that happen. And we can be your consultant for free. We will not charge the schools a dime. We're paid by the state of New York to actually do some of this work. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Do you have something to leave with us so that we can look it over?
I can certainly make copies. I don't have anything right now. I apologize. You have?
I have the slide that she just presented.
Yes.
I can forward it to you guys.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. I have cards, though. Would you like cards?
Yes, please.
Actually, I have magnetic cards, which are even better.
Yes.
No one throws away magnetic cards. But I am very pleased to be here. I am one citizen trying to do the right thing, and I want to encourage more people in our communities to come forward and help our children. I'm a former dentist, and I practiced mostly pediatric dentistry in Harlem, and I also ran the largest union for doctors in the United States. So I'm here to help. If you need any kind of resources, please reach out to me. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Did you have any more questions?
No, but we, I'm going to send them the pitch here.
Okay.
And we can reach out. Thank you. Mr. Church, do you, you have an excess of cards. Do you want them back? We can pass them around. Okay. All right, no problem. Thank you. Community reports. Helene and Gloria, you have committee reports for special ed? The voting, maybe?
Everybody's a winner. We couldn't decide which one of the posters that we want to award the microphone.
Sorry. The youngsters had a contest, and we were supposed to vote on which one we thought was best. After reviewing them, there was no way that we really could select any one. Each poster had a message that was unique and reflective of that particular youngster. So I had a very difficult time with them, so I thought they were all winners. I think we're going to go with all winners?
Yeah.
Okay. That's about it. And just a reminder that, is it June 9?
June 9.
June 9 is going to be the signing of the charter or the Septive Committee. So hopefully, people will come out for that.
And also, we're going to have a, what did she call it? A, some type, a sneaker ball for the life skills students at Mount Vernon High School. So that's coming in May. I don't have a date yet, but stay tuned, okay? Lorna, do you have anything?
Yes. So I want to give an update on our Budget Committee. The Budget Committee met for the final time probably about two weeks ago. In all, the committee met on an average of two weeks for the last six months. I want to really thank the members of the committee. You guys have done a hard and great job. Trustee Gail, Trustee Kelly. We also had community members. We had three members from the community. We had Lenny Server. We had Derek Clay, and we had Tom Keller. But most of all, I really want to thank Mr. Silver. He put up with us for the last six months. We all came at him at once, sometimes, and he never lost his cool. So, Mr. Silver, I say thank you for putting up with us to get this budget balanced. Through careful planning, I have to say, we were able to shift some of the workbooks, as well as the materials and the supplies, to grant programs, while it allowed us to basically focus on the needs for the school district, right? Which include contractual obligations and needs of the children. After the final meeting of the committee, we learned that the state had in fact stepped in to give us some advance lottery aid. Mr. Silver spoke about that tonight. We also owe, I have to say, Assemblyman Pretlow and Senator Bailey for sponsoring the legislation to help us through this difficult time. We were able to get $5 million from the state. This allows us to make the following adjustment. And Mr. Silver already pointed out that we will be hiring Associate Superintendent for Business. We're going to add five resource officers, SROs. We are going to hire nine reading teachers, nine math specialists. We are adding funds to the CTE program for after-school at the high school. And we're also going to hire four attendance teachers. Good news. In addition, I am so pleased, because this is very near and dear to my heart, that we will be offering after-school program. For the budget, we were able to increase the after-school program to $100,000 for the upcoming school year. So parents will be able to pick after-school program. We will be working with the administration to get after-school program for the kids from three to six. And as parents know, we all struggle for after-school programs. We have to pay a lot for busing and for children to be picked up in the school district because there are no, literally no after-school programs. So I am going to spearhead that. I promise, from the day that I took seats as a trustee, that I will get after-school program in the school district, and it will happen come September. As Mr. Silver pointed out, the budget stands right now at $265,969,821. And we actually came in a little lower in the budget by $96,000. That's a big deal. And because of that, as a result of that, there will be no tax increase. I know, I mean, as taxpayers, as residents who pay taxes, we don't want tax increase. We know the school district has not increased taxes for over some years. In the future, we will, but right now, we have revenue, so no need to increase taxes. We will work with the budget that we have. And as everyone heard, we came in below, shorter from last year's budget, we came in $96,000 less. The trustees, you will get tonight to approve the budget with the modification that Mr. Silver spoke about. For the acting superintendent, Dr. Smith, we thank you for your support. You came in and jumped right into the budget when we were telling you what we want, and we were adamant of what we want. No cuts, no cuts, no cuts. We were like, we're not cutting no program for the kids. We end up cutting staff. We just have to work with what we have, and we have to balance our books. So thank you so much. Again, I want to thank the trustees who worked on the committee, and of course, our president. You came in ever so often, and you want to know what's going on. Thank you so much for your support and helping us balance this budget. You know, there's a lot, lot left in the future for the schools, but long-term solutions we will find, right, for the problems that we face today, as we heard about the security. So that is going to be worked on. And the Budget Committee, we will be meeting probably in another week or two to finish up on long-term needs of the school district. So again, Mr. Silver, I thank you so much for your support and all your hard work. We couldn't have done this without you. And to the committee members, thank you so much. And that's, and my report.
Thank you. Trustee Lindsay, any report from you?
Well, as far as the security report, I think Mr. Fagan and Dr. Jones went over it quite well, the improvements that have been done. It's unfortunate incidents like what happened on April 11 point out our many vulnerabilities. But I do know from our meetings, Dr. Jones, Mr. Fagan, the rest of the security team have been diligently been working pretty much since last June, which is when we really started to retool security, or I don't like using the word reinventing in security, but we really started to retool security and bring things together. They've explained all the improvements we've made. It's difficult to do an entire district all at once, so they are doing it sequentially, school by school. Every now and then, when something happens, school tends to get moved to the forefront of our minds and get things done. I just, again, I think we have come a long way in a short time. I think we have a very long way to go because we still have a lot of issues, a lot of vulnerabilities. And I just really just want to thank Doc Jones and Mr. Fagan because they've really kept this together, kept it going. And I know basically anything that happens, Mr. Fagan is texting me, emailing me, calling me, just to keep me apprised of what goes on. So I appreciate everything that's done.
And you also had a meeting with Tyree Woodson.
Excuse me. And recently, we found out we will, we've had numerous meetings with the city where we discussed SROs, which didn't seem to be something that they were able to assist us with. We did recently have a meeting with county legislator, and we, at this time, appear to be able to hopefully acquire five or more, six, five?
We asked for six, correct?
I know, but I'll be happy with five. Five SROs for the district. Hopefully, we'll have them by June, I mean, by September. We shall see what happens.
Thank you. Trustee, read anything from you? Okay. Trustee Kelly?
I'm going to try to be positive. I would like to see an audit of all the emergency response. I would like to understand how we plan to respond before things happen. I would like that for the trustees. We have a report from facilities that there are a number of incidences that were resolved in-house. There was a gas leak at a school, and our staff, our maintenance people, resolved the issue with Mr. Ragusa. There was a leak at Williams or the radiator. There was damage on the outside wall, again, resolved by our employees in the district. I think that when you have a consultant in the district, and they can save you money by working with your staff, that is a positive. That helps to balance the budget, and I appreciate the fact that we have people in the district who are employed by the district who are working together to provide a safe and clean environment for our children. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee White?
Also in facilities, also in facilities, we, the shaft for the elevator has been opened. It's wide enough. They're working on it.
Williams?
At Williams School. And they will, they'll be finished soon because they're bringing in all the materials. Also, they had a gas leak, which our workers found the gas leak, and under Mr., I call him Mike, Ragusa, they were able to fix it and put new plumbing in. So our school, we say with Mike Ragusa, we are saving a lot of money on facilities. I also had a meeting with about 15 teachers, and I don't, I won't get into the details, but I got a lot of reports of what they feel that's bothering them. And I had a meeting with Jamal Doggett and, no, Jamal Doggett and you on what the teachers said.
Oh, I see.
So I got the teacher's report. Also, I had a meeting, an education meeting, the needs for reading specialists. Thank you. And we talked about our needs. We talked about what is needed, and I am so happy to see that, I think we said we were about seven short, seven to eight, and we're going to get nine new reading teachers, which is a blessing because our kids need to be in smaller groups than what they are now. So it's going to be a great year next year. We're going to see a lot of new improvements. We're going to see a lot of new improvements. We're going to have our math teachers, math specialists working with us, our reading specialists working with us. So all in all, we're going to have a good year.
Thank you, Trustee White.
Actually, may I just add to the facilities? One thing that has been completed is the cooling tower over at Lincoln, which is very important. And as I was showing my appreciation for Dr. Jones and Mr. Fagan, I'd like to show my appreciation for Mr. Silver, who keeps me very apprised of what goes on with various issues within the district when it comes to facilities. Actually keeps all of us informed.
So I think there was a question as to how many custodials and cleaners are for each building? And I don't know if we ever, do we have, is it measured by square footage? Or is it measured by students? And do we need more cleaners in each building?
Mr. Silver, would you like to speak to that, or Ms. Tigs?
Good evening, Kekan. So the custodial or cleaning staff is determined by a combination of the number of children and the size of the building. Also, the condition of the building has to make a difference. If we have floors that are coming up or water damage or something, we have to change the staffing. We have to sometimes move staff from one place to another when we are missing staff. And we always have people having to step in and work out of title when we are missing staff who have been injured or who are sick or who have left. And Ms. Tigs works very hard to keep everything staffed. And the facilities part of that is also squarely in the hands of the building principals who do the interviewing with Mr. Botros present during the interview process. And, but we are always short-staffed in this area. And so we do have to shift people around as we need to shift them. There has to be somebody to open the building, somebody who knows how to manage all of the intricate, modern equipment that we now have in the buildings, whether it be safety, security, or whether it be just the HVAC system that we know we just replaced in all the buildings just four or five years ago. And so the number of staff sometimes varies depending upon the enrollment, depending upon the number of staff, whether we're using all the buildings, what's going on in the buildings. And during the summer, we also have the same problem because we have programs in all the buildings, and we expect to have the availability of all the buildings this summer, including Trapphegan, which has not been used for a few years during the summer. And so we have to staff that at the same time as we are doing the major yearly cleaning in the buildings. I'm not sure I answered your question, maybe I went more.
So my question is, I know, how many custodial staff or cleaners are assigned to each of the buildings? Because the size of the buildings does not change. The amount of people in the building changes. And are we short-staffed? An example would be Washington School of the Performing Arts.
So we know that that is short-staffed, and we've been moving people around to try to fill that in. Of course, it's unlike security where we may have extra people to put in. We only have a finite number of staff members. And so that causes people to have to work overtime, which is not what we want, for sure. And then the fire watches have also eaten into some of our staffing, where people are staying up all night, walking around the buildings, and then working during the day.
So are we hiring? What is going on with that?
We are hiring, yes.
How many are in the pipeline to be hired in the next month? Because we're talking about summer school now, and you're not talking about closing any buildings. So I need to understand, are we going to be fully staffed in order to have all those buildings open?
So I'll answer that part. We do not have cleaner vacancies at this time. We have three, I think we just gained an additional one, three or four head custodians and about the same four custodians. There ranges from three to 17 per building because of the size of the building, as well as the enrollment. So in that sense, we don't have cleaner vacancies. It's the custodians and head custodians that we have vacancies at this time. We can only use per diem. So that's not taking into account that we may have someone out sick or on vacation. Per diems, there's a very, there's a little trick to the contract for CSEA. And so we can only use a per diem in a long-term absence. So when we know someone goes out on FMLA, when we know someone is out on worker's comp for a while, otherwise, we're grieved and we don't like grievances. So the principals, as Mr. Silver said, hire, they do, they conduct the compact interviews in collaboration with Mr. Botros. They make a recommendation to Human Resources, and then we put them forth on the agenda. And so.
And so we're in the process of filling those vacancies?
Yes, principals did canvass the list. We just exhausted the list. So for both positions, the head custodian as well as the custodian, they're all going to be provisional hires at this time because there's no list.
Okay, so we are.
But I think, I think a posting, an announcement just went out for one of the two. I can't recall.
Will there be a new list? And if so, when?
So the announcement just went out for the exam. So the exam takes place, and then it's a couple of months later. To be totally transparent, I don't foresee a list before the next four to six months.
So there'll be provisional?
There'll be provisional hires.
Okay.
They will then take the test. If they're immediately reachable, they become probationary. And if they're not, then they can return to their last position, and the principals hire from the list. Should there not be enough, they can have a second appointment as a provisional.
Okay. I appreciate both of you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Silver. Is that it for your committee report?
Yes.
So I just wanted to remind everybody that Friday is Shark Tank. And I asked all the trustees to be on the tank. So it's going to be at Mount Vernon High School, 1:00. Be there. Okay? You guys are going to be judges, and Dr. Smith is going to be a judge. And we're going to have, we also are going to have the owner of King Soul Food. And Howie from Fleetwood Deli is going to be a judge. And someone else that Noel Campbell mentioned. Okay? So I'll see you on Friday at 1:00. Also, I want to let you guys, remember, we went to the Bosse's event last week. And they were so excited that we came because no one from Mount Vernon usually goes. So they were excited that we came there.
And one of our ex-board members says hello.
Yeah.
You know what it is?
And I think that's it.
My question, this is Ms. Tigs. I know we had talked about career, another career day here for.
Job fair?
Job fair, I'm sorry, yes. Did we ever pick a date?
We did not. We are racking our hands around our vacancies. As we're developing the budget to see what vacancies we'll have. Otherwise, we would host one. Principals wouldn't want to participate if they don't know who they're looking for.
Thank you.
So now that we're going to adopt the budget, we can, right? So why don't we schedule something next week? You, myself.
A little job fair next week?
No, no, no. You, myself, and trustee, you, myself, and trustee White, schedule something. Yes, okay? All right, thank you. That's it for committee reports?
Yeah.
All right. So we have all business? I think that's enough, right? Okay, so we'll go right on. Yeah, enough of all business. All right, so we'll go right to the resolutions?
Resolutions.
Let's get this going.
Can I have a motion for 5.1, Human Resources ADA Certified?
Second.
Send it one more time.
Right.
And Kelly, yes, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions?
The question I had about one of the resolutions, did you put the attachment in the, in board docs?
I believe that was already there, but I responded to your email.
Are you there? Okay. Thank you.
Questions, concerns, discussions? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 5.2, Human Resources, ADB?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Who was that?
Me.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So was one of the resolutions, was one of the things called?
That was the one, the name was called.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 5.3, Approval to Establish the Title Associate Superintendent for Business?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.1, Authorization for an After-School Lifeguard Certification?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.2, Authorization to Hire Staff to oversee the Mount Vernon City School District pool when rented by outside organizations?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Have we updated the rental fees for the facilities?
That would be Mr. Silver.
Have we, when was the last time we updated rental fees for facilities in the district?
That was reviewed last year. I don't know that it was changed, but it was reviewed last year. I can certainly.
Can we please review that and have a, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.3, Authorization to Enter Into a Memorandum of Understanding with the Bronx River Alliance?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question, Dr. Doggett, have we, are we going to be working with them? With the living environment, the Bronx Alliance for, we have a lot of environmental things coming in. So are you going to be spearheading this with the curriculum?
Yes. Once I receive this, I'm actually waiting for it to be approved tonight. I'm going to meet with Dr. Jagnan and then the principal of the high school. We're going to put together a plan to see when we can start this.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.4, Authorization for the Grow Bag Initiative at Mount Vernon High School by the Zeta Nu Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority?
Motion.
Who was the first? Who said that? Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.5, Authorization to Conduct Saturday Region's Review Programs at All High Schools?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.1, Authorization to Partner with Project Rise through Family Services of Westchester?
Motion.
Second.
I have a question.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So who put this resolution through? Is this yours, Mr. Dr. Doc? I was asking because I'm asked, what are the credentials for the two social workers for the mental health-based programs at Williams and Graham? Are they licensed clinical social workers or licensed master social workers? And are they required to have a New York State School License certification?
Yes, they are.
They are required?
Yes, they're coming through Project Rise. They are certified.
They're certified? They're licensed clinical social workers or licensed master social workers? Clinical?
That's what I was saying.
So did we get any type of certification with that application?
Not yet.
But we will get that?
May I ask a question while you're looking into different things pertaining to this? Not if, is, I was just wondering, is the, it says the FSW pursue an Article 31 license to sustain the program long-term. Does that mean they are currently licensed to do this? Or do they have a temporary in order to initiate the program? Because it appears that they do require that license in order.
Clinicians. That's what it says. Am I correct? That it says clinicians? Are we talking about the social workers? So then that's the agreement, right? They're not hired, but there they are on the tab here.
They would be provided to the school districts through Project Rise. Agreed, through Project Rise.
Right, but that, we have some supporting evidence here. Is this the preliminary?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.2, Authorization for the Youth Leadership Institute to Collaborate with Childhood Hunger Initiative Power Pack at Lincoln School by the Zeta Nu Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority?
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.1, Approval of Student Services Pupil Personnel Service Memorandum, Number 17, dated April 18, 2023?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Quick question, Dr. Smith. You approve these, you oversee, you've reviewed these already, right? Tell me. Gabitan?
Yes, ma'am.
You've reviewed those already?
Yes, I did. We double-checked them.
It is on your recommendation.
Yes, we double-checked them.
I know you're thorough. I just wanted to know where the buck will lie.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We triple-checked them today, even before the board meeting. We had some questions, and we went over them again.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question on this as well? Under Section 2, with the agreement with TutorMe LA, just, I know it's an outside consulting firm. And I've been reading it, they do hire certified teachers to do it. Do they hire ours? Do they bring in their own? And I guess in the future, not with this one, is there a reason we would hire outside when we have teachers who we could probably make tutors?
These are to provide services to our students who are homebound or special ed, where we also owe compensatory services? So it's an outside agency. And also, it's hard for our teachers to also apply for this position. Right, so that's the reason why we use an outside service. Currently, we have a lot of student we do owe to doing services. Also, to be aware that New York State has changed the hours for homebound. So we are going to, you know, have to use outside services other than our teachers. We do put posting out, and sometimes we don't get anyone to apply.
Okay. All right. Understood.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.2, Authorization and Hiring of Staff to Conduct the 2023-2024 Adult Education Program?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? Although is it, okay.
I just have a question. It's adult education, is this something we're reinstating in the district? Has it always been in the district?
It's always been here.
Was it at Lincoln?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.3, Approval of a Memorandum of Understanding between the Westchester County New York Chapter of the Lynx Incorporated and the Mount Vernon City School District Regarding the Colgate-Palmolive Bright Smiles Bright Faces Program?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.1, Approve the Sediment Tax Proceedings for Airborne Realty LLC, PAC, Mount Vernon Management, Fleetwood Glen Condominiums, and 271 West First Street Corp.?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.2, Approve General Funds Transfers 2022-2023, Dated April 18, 2023?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.3?
Motion.
Wait, sorry, sorry, sorry.
9.3?
Yeah. Can I have a motion for 9.3, Acceptance of Federal and State Summer Food Service Program Funding and Adoption, and Adopt a Budget for the 2023 Summer Food Program, Food Service Program?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So, who's providing the food? Mr. Silver? Where are we getting this food from?
Well, the, I don't think it's going to be Whittson's. We're going out to bid. We may have a new contractor by that time. So, whoever's the contractor will be the contractor providing that. These, the summer program is paid entirely, well, $6,000 is paid from the general fund and $198,000 is paid out of federal funds. But who's providing the foods is to be determined.
So, what you're saying is it's going to be the same person who's going to do the food service for the school year?
Yes.
So, did you put in, did you put an RFP out yet?
That's, we, the state has to approve the bid. It's not an RFP, it's a bid. And the state has to approve that, and we're very close to having them approve it. It's a, it's a very specific document that includes the summer and the, and the school year, as well as multiple years that it can be used for. But the time is up on the old bid. It has to be redone, and they have given us several years of, because of the COVID, they've extended the period of time before we had to bid again, but that time is up now.
So, we're approving this without anybody, without knowing who's going to do it, is that...
We're approving the, the program itself and the funding itself. We're not approving the provider of the food. This is just setting up the program with the feds so that we can offer the program.
Okay. Thank you. Who decides? The, the feds are going to decide on whose services our district?
No.
We are.
We, we are. We will be doing a formal bid, and there'll be a committee reviewing the bid, and we believe we're, no, we are going to have a, a tasting, as we did like five years ago, where the food service providers, who were trying to get our business, came in and provided lunch for a bunch of kids and staff in this room. And we intend to do that again.
Thank you.
That's part of, that's actually part of the bid spec.
Great, thank you. I didn't understand.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.4, Approve TRITURF for Athletic Field Maintenance at a Cost of $180,000 for the Period of April 1, 2023 through March 31, 2024? Motion. I need a second?
Second.
Question.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Mr. Silver? Why is the cost not so much to maintain those fields?
So, this is the same company that we've used for six years at Mount Vernon High School. It's the same price as it has been for six years, $180,000. If you review the attachment, you'll see that they're cutting the grass on all of that acreage every week and maintaining the sprinkler system at the high school, as well as all the flower beds, the trails, just everything that's there. They also take care of all of the equipment that is movable, nets, backstops, bleachers. And so, again, this, they have not raised their price in all these years. And this is a little out of order, to nobody's fault, but we, we will be approving on 9.7, the Ed Data bids, which is, this is a part of the Ed Data bids, which, which are out of sync with all the rest of our bids. The Ed Data bids are from April 1 to March 31 each year, which causes us a problem in the middle of every year, having to have a new bidder come in and do something that somebody else has already been doing. But in this case, we're renewing this with, with TRITURF to continue their work. So, the Ed Data bids will be 9.7. You'll see that huge list of bids that we can use if we wish to. We don't have to. Any, anybody, we can have our own bid for anything, or piggyback on another school district or any other municipality in the state of New York, if that's permitted.
All those in favor?
Hold on, one more question. Now, do we utilize our staff for this, or they bring in other people?
This, this is not our staff. The high school fields are not our staff. Our staff does everything else except the flower beds and the irrigation systems, like in this building, where we have a sprinkler system in the back. There are six buildings that have irrigation systems, and that is done by an outside company. But our staff takes care of all the lawn cutting, all the shrubbery, and all, on all 16, 16 locations.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.5, Authorization to Reject Bid for RFP Number 2022-2023-05, Business and Finance Consultant Services to Re-Advertize in the Best Interests of the District?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.6, Adoption of the 2023-2024 School Budget and Property Tax Report Card?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.7, Authorization to Accept the 2023-2024 Educational Data Services, Inc. Bids?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Yes. When did the bids go out? Those are the bids that he was just talking about, that were, with Ed Data, I believe. Is that what you were just saying?
Right. This is, this is, this is a, an arm, no, it's, it's a private company that, that does bidding on behalf of school districts and other municipalities throughout the state.
Okay.
BOSI's also does the same, similar things, but more on the area of materials and supplies and janitorial supplies, but this is for harder services.
Okay.
Like fencing, fire escapes, playgrounds, that type of stuff.
Understood now. Thank you very much for the clarity.
May I just ask, when it comes to bidding, I know the, I, we've had a discussion before, and I know these are bids that we can take because they're part of the cooperative. Do we put out to bid, or we just automatically take these?
Some we do ourselves.
Okay.
One of the companies on here that actually President Saunders mentioned before was, was Crown Heating and Plumbing. But sometime, in, in other cases, we use, we do our own bid for that type of service. Sometimes we do our own, sometimes we take these bids, we take the BOSI's bids, or we attach ourselves to another school district where it's permitted, called a piggyback, or another municipality. So, we use one contractor that's off of the Bay Shore School District bids. Their bid says piggyback, and we can use their bid. So, we can do our own, which is more costly and more difficult to do, or, or attach ourselves to somebody else's. If it's RFPs, we do that ourselves.
And how, when it comes to this cooperative like this, how do, because I get a lot of conversations with local businesses, how do local business, local trades companies get affiliated with Ed Data? In order, and how do they, how do the local business end up on the list we end up getting?
So, we are more than happy to provide guidance. I'll come back, I'll talk about the guidance in a minute. But we are happy to provide that guidance to anybody to be in touch with Ed Data Services. It's something, they answer their phone. There's, they have a whole website. It's easy to sign up. But it's not necessarily easy to manage what needs to be done. They have to be able to be bonded, and they have to be able to get insurance to be able to be on this, or to bid with us, or with any other municipality in the state. They can't just offer to do the work. We have had workshops here over the years to provide training in OSHA work and in, and how to prepare bids. We did that before and during the bond that we had in 2016 and 2017. We had no bidders. We had several workshops, tried to inform people of what they needed to do to be a part of it, and nobody was.
No, I, there were a lot of different businesses. I understand there's some that are fly-by-night, and there's real businesses. I mean, my question was of the businesses, say that, I would know that, I would say, oh, totally qualified to do this work. Is it difficult for them to get on this list, or do they have to, if they wanted to end up on the list for Mount Vernon here like this, do they have to run a bid somewhere else in order to, because we acquired the list?
So, these bids are good throughout the state. So, they could be anywhere, but I'm more than happy to provide guides to somebody to get in touch.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.8, Accept a Donation of the 50, of a 55-inch Insignia 4K Fire TV, valued at $400 for Cecile H. Parker's School?
Motion. Second.
Concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.9, Authorization to Accept a Donation of Des from Montefiore School of Nursing?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
You walk the top, I walk the bottom.
Can I have a motion for 9.10, Authorization to Accept a Donation of Water-Bottled Tumblers?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.11, Accept a Donation for $550 from the Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers for the Mount Vernon City School District Homeless?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought somebody said it first.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.1, Approve the 2023-2024 Southern Westchester BOSI Administrative Budget? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.2, Election of Trustees to Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services?
Motion.
Second.
Um, who was first?
About me.
Okay. And second was? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.3, Authorization to Retire Policies 6120 and 7242?
Motion.
Who was second?
Second.
Oh, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.4, Authorization to Revise Policies 3210, 3150, 5670, and 5410?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Can I have a motion for 10.5, First Reading, Policy 0100, Non-Discrimination and Equal Opportunity, 0100-R, Non-Discrimination and Equal Opportunity Regulation, and 5800, Payroll Procedures?
Motion.
Who's that? I don't see you.
That was...
Eileen. Gloria.
And red. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Dr. Gabitan is waiting to read to us.
Okay. So, I'm going to start with 5800, Payroll Procedures. So, this is a local policy to address some of our payroll issues we've been having. So, one of the main part that this policy does, it requires a superintendent will initiate a yearly test to verify the accuracy and appropriateness of district payroll. This test shall be conducted by October 30 by Assistant Superintendent of Business. The test shall confirm that individual listed on the payroll or currently employed by the district in that titles, hours worked, wages and benefit listed or correct and confirmed to the applicable contract. The test shall also confirm that individual listed as employees or employ and are not independent contractors. The procedure for determining employment status is outlined in Policy 9500, Compensation and Benefit. The superintendent will evaluate the result of the test and determine if its improvement is needed to be made.
Motion to waive the first reading.
The next policy, Policy 011, this is a non-discrimination and equal opportunities policy. The policy that was retired, equal opportunity from 2006, has been replaced by NISBA with one that includes non-discrimination of both student and staff. This includes rules from the Crown Act that prevent discrimination against hairstyle and protective hairstyle. It also includes specific instruction, who is the grievance person, as well as who to notify if there is any case of discrimination or unequal opportunity. Accompanying that policy is Policy 0001-R, which is a regulation that defines the complaints, that define what it means to be allegation of discrimination, the stage of compliance, as well as the rule of the superintendent, HR, and the board.
Motion to waive the first reading. Second reading.
That was the second one, wasn't it?
Done?
Thank you. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. And our last one. Can I have a motion for 10.6, Authorization to Waive the Second Read-in for Policy 0100, Non-Discrimination and Equal Opportunity, 0100-R, Non-Discrimination and Equal Opportunity Regulation, and 500 Payroll Procedures and Immediately Adopt?
Motion. Second.
All right. Okay, second. Who was the first?
Gloria.
Blame it on Gloria.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. For the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to their appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and to receive legal advice on a pending matter. Motion.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Now, where is this show tank going to be held?
At the high school.
In the auditorium?
Come here, I'm so quick. Dr. Doggett. Dr. Doggett. You have to tell it. It's anxious.
You can have my...